Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mrs. Burns, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Parentano.
Present.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Boyle.
I'm here.
Mrs. Hallenbeck.
Present.
Mr. Kovitz.
Here.
Mr. Marington.
Here.
Mr. Cirillo.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Present.
We have a form.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Can we all stand for a pledge of allegiance? Thank you, everyone. This will move us to our executive session statement. The board met an executive station this -- excuse me. It's hard with this mask. The board met an executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss the matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase of lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and/or matters related to school safety and security. Mrs. Burns, do we have any announcements?
No announcements.
No announcements. That will move us to Dr. Rob McGee's report on reopening the schools. Superintendent McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. Just wait for the PowerPoint to come up here. I'll get started as we wait for the PowerPoint. One of the goal or the goals of the reopening and philosophy of the reopening plan was to make sure we provided parents flexibility and choice along with the safety of their students, including transparency. We also wanted to be able to switch to any one of our options in a short notice and provide an opt-out piece if parents weren't comfortable sending their children to school yet, where they could easily transition back into school. So based on those principles, over the course of the last months, we've done a lot of things. We began thinking we were not going to be able to get students back into school at all. Somewhere that transpired into thinking we could get half the students back into school in a given day. I and the cabinet and the building principals and custodians toured every building, every hallway, making sure that would work. Prior to that being finished, there seemed to be the notion, as Pennsylvania at the end of June moved towards green, that we could get all kids back in. So we began working on that plan. Before we finished planning for that, things slid back the other way, and they continued to slide. So here's a timeline as to far as where we are. We're going to ask, hopefully by the end of this week, I'll be able to give a recommendation to both the committee and the board for what September looks like. And then from there, we're going to ask parents to decide whether they're going to transport their own kids or not, so we can make room on buses to keep it to two children per seat. And then, once our plan is solidified, we'll ask parents whether they're comfortable with that plan, or they'd like to opt out for some type of remote learning, which we'll describe in more detail. So what determines whether we come back to school? Obviously, safety is the first thing. And that's the level of the virus in the area. I'm not the expert at that, but we have them to talk to. And there are precautions that we put together, all right? In addition to that is what we're able to do in terms of material, staff, and the time to do it. So if I were to tell you right now, we have all the material and the time to get it done, we haven't. But we still have time. We still have weeks to do. But the final, the most important piece, is the extent to which the students, parents, and staff believe they're safe when they return. So that's the most difficult piece. And I don't think that any of those three groups are fully satisfied with their safety returning at this point. That's my opinion. So we have four options. One, we call it Option A. It's all-in. Everyone comes in every day. I'll explain more about that in a second. Option B, red and blue. Blue and red, because we're in Ashamonee, where we alternate days. In-school one day, online the next day. Option C, if we're unable to open or told to close, which is all online in Canvas. And the final option D, if a family is not comfortable sending their child back to school, if we're in Option A or B, they can remain home, learn online remotely, and come back when they're more comfortable. So that's an overview. Option A, all-in every day. Looks a lot like normal school. Class deaths are about three feet apart. We change traffic patterns in our middle schools and high schools to help students keep themselves apart. We close areas like locker banks, common areas, and do things different ways so they can't congregate. So Plan A looks a lot like normal school with an effort to keep three feet apart facing the same direction in classroom. That is the hardest thing to achieve, and we continue to work for that simply because we hope we can do it at some point in the future. Whether it's September 2nd or not, I'm not sure. Actually, I highly doubt it at this point. But at some point, that is our goal, to get back to that model. So we're working towards that. We're purchasing for that. Remember the toilet paper shortage? Well, we're going to do the same thing with desks and buses and all that stuff. So we have to make sure we get that stuff first before others do. So we're still working towards that. Is that my time limit already, Steve? The heck? I'm on like Slide 2. All right. Plan B. Plan B is an every-other-day model. First day in school, next day online, then in school and online. What that does is it cuts the student population in half, and we walk the buildings with principals and custodians, and we can keep kids six feet apart in that model, all right? Assuming they don't move. Moving's a different issue, but we can work on that. Lunchrooms would be in the classroom at the elementary level. At the secondary level, we'd use classroom desks in the cafeteria, maybe some of the gym spaces. Again, no lockers, one-way traffic in the hallway. The difference between Plan A and Plan B is simply the number of kids in school. And half the learning experience is at home, online, while the teacher is teaching the other half of your class. Plan C, if we're forced to, is all-online. I would say the base model is similar to the spring, but we have some enhancements ready to go. But getting out of the gate, if we're forced out, the base model's ready to go. Our teachers are planned through October. If it's an extended out, we'll add more synchronous enhancements with live classroom and more Zoom meetings, assessments, grading, attendance, et cetera. We're hoping not to use that option, but it's there. It's planned. It's ready to go. And the opt-out option, if parents aren't comfortable sending their children back. This is a short-term solution, so they can test the waters and see what's going on in school, reading, math, science, and social studies. Taught by an Ashamonee teacher with an Ashamonee curriculum, not necessarily their teacher that they have in school. There'd be synchronous components that we add as we add them to Plan A and B, or C. I'm sorry, B or C. At the onset, there would not be elective and special classes, but depending on the duration, we'd be able to add that. It's not a long-term solution. If a family was looking for a long-term solution for the year, we have another option that's outside Plan D. Plan D's goal is to let parents and families have time to watch what's going on and see if they're comfortable coming back to school. Additional modifications under consideration. Delaying the start of school if students, parents, staff, and material have not arrived yet. That's a serious consideration. Staggering the opening of schools by grade. Excuse me. To provide time for our teachers, one, to learn the new procedures, and for our teachers to teach students the new procedures, and for students to learn the new procedures in smaller groups. So that staggering might look like kindergarten comes in one day, kindergarten, 5th grade and 9th grade come in one day, and then different grades come in the next day. And you can eventually bring them together for a better program, all right? Also, in the A-B plan, or the A-B alternating day, there is a possibility of using that as a setup to get into all, everybody in. Instead of jumping to all-in, you know, let's try it for a month, two months, make sure people are comfortable with it, then it's an easier phase in. So those are the big areas. Transportation, some background. Buses have roughly 26 seats. And at the high school, we load 50-plus students in. At the middle school, 60-plus students. At the elementary school, 70-plus students. So that's more than two students a seat. The Pennsylvania Department of Health has said, keep it to two students per seat. So that is our goal. We're going to actually have parents opt out based on the survey. I'll show you in a second. Looks like we have significant numbers that will be able to do that. And once parents make that choice and help us out, we'll be able to rebalance bus routes to make sure that we can keep it to two children per seat. That would include windows open, hatches open, masks, et cetera. Sure.
I just have a question on the A-B plan.
Yep.
If it's like every-other-day scenario. What if it's a day that we have a holiday in the schedule right now?
Yes.
How would that work?
So my goal was to do it every other day, just rotate A-B, and we'd skip. But that gets us 50% in, 50% out. I've been convinced that that's not good for families and daycare and the routine of life, and any benefit from that is lost. That plan keeps student support, both academically, socially, emotionally, counseling-wise, excuse me, only 36 hours away. So by switching to another plan every other day with a Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday, some students are going to miss a day. You're going to miss more Mondays than you are Wednesdays probably. So that group who has the Monday, Wednesday would have less in-school instruction on those days.
We're not looking to revamp the schedule. Like if you're Monday and a holiday happens to fall on a Monday, you don't have to come to class that day.
Yep.
Just like Thursday, Thanksgiving, for example, those kids.
Correct.
Okay.
Now that I said that, there's probably some exception where we would do that, but that's probably not the goal.
General rule.
Yeah. Agreed.
Doc, I had a question as well. Can you hear me all right?
I can.
Okay. So in the transition between A-days and B-days, will there be time for custodial staff to clean and sanitize all surfaces, hallways, stuff like that?
Yes, that's in the health and safety plan. We'll talk about that in a second, but yes, the goal is to, between the days, in the evening, to do more of these sanitizing stuff, cleaning surfaces, making sure that's taken care of. Excuse me. We might skip emptying trash cans a day that aren't needed to be emptied. We might skip sweeping a floor. We might skip doing other things to make sure we have time to wipe down high-touch areas, desks, and services, et cetera. Every night. Every night.
Okay, thank you.
My apologies. I have a tickle in my throat. It's not a persistent cough. Don't worry.
Dr. McGee, with that Plan 2, whether it's all-in or A-B, the kids are still going to be moving between classes?
Yes.
So there's going to be more time in between classes so the surfaces can be wiped down as well?
Between classes, basically, we don't have the people to wipe down between classes. So we're going to provide the classrooms with spray bottles, the appropriate solvent, and paper towels, so they can self-wipe down, or the teacher can orchestrate that cleaning. Yes. Yes. Yep. Yes. All right. So I talked about transportation. Here's just a brief look at the survey. Red is the all-in, and this is dated as to when it happened, and people's minds changed. So red is all-in. Blue was Plan B, the hybrid. C, probably a bad survey on my part. I really didn't want people to pick C, but they did, so it's a flaw in me doing surveys. At the time, that wasn't even an option. This would have to, you know, shut us down. But apparently that has, you know, moved more towards the forefront. And the yellow is parents who would choose to opt out at that given time. So the next breakdown is simply by grade level. I've straightened out the colors that I had wrong before. So this is elementary school.
Dr. McGee, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
How many parents were surveyed?
Up to the top of my head, 6,400 out of the 9,500 responded.
And how many responses did you receive back?
6,400.
Was the total you received back?
Yes. That's children. So the parents were asked to respond per child. So we got 6,500 responses back, representing 6,500 students.
Okay.
So this is the middle school. Interestingly, there is a slight difference in opinion of middle school parents for the A-B plan as compared to the full-in and the high school. This is our transportation. The first bar on the left is walkers. The purple bar is those who are comfortable with the full load, three kids a seat. The gold bar, not the one to the far right, was those who preferred only two per seat. And the yellow bar is those who said, "I'll drive my child to help you out. I don't want them on the bus, or I'll help you out by giving other kids a seat." So that leads us to believe that we'll be able to reshuffle buses if those numbers materialize when it's actually time to opt out. And finally, just even though the governor's mask order was just put in place, I did ask about masks. Prior to the governor's mask order, we would have made masks mandatory on buses, in hallways, and when you were in close proximity to another. The governor's mask order changed that, but this was a survey just after it came out. Red would be masks described, as I said, with the district plan, hallways and when you're close. Blue is masks should be required at all time, and green was masks should not be worn at all. Again, we don't really have a choice at this point. Masks are required.
Dr. McGee, can you just add some additional commentary about the extent, the extent as a district we've gone to to meet the demands of the mitigation we have to do to provide a safe environment as far as, you know, the devices, the products we're purchasing and so forth?
First time I've done this. Not really good at it. The pay, we've purchased 1,200 elementary desks so kids can face the same way. We have stanchions purchased to the tune of thousands, floor dots, floor arrows, spray bottles, hand sanitizer, gallons, tissues, a whole bunch of other stuff. It's on the second-to-last page of the document. I'll get there in a second. All right? So that stuff has been purchased. We've paid to have it expedited here, and some of it's actually arrived. Some of it's actually arrived.
Thank you. And could you also go into a little bit more detail on our buses, what we're going to need from the public as we move forward as far as to help us design routes for the new bus seating arrangements that we'll have to have on our buses? Mike?
So buses, once parents opt out, we'll have to reroute buses, because there'll probably be 20 kids on one bus and 70 on another. So we'll have to redesign that. Our transportation department's been working since early June, working through that. Once we do that, masks will be required on buses. Those buses with hatches will open the hatch, crack some windows. Students will wear masks. We'll load the buses from the back to the front and then unload them the opposite way. So that is our plan for buses now. The drivers will wipe down high-touch areas between runs to make sure we do our best on that part. So our health and safety plan, which is a lot of what I've just spoken about, has six areas: cleaning, sanitation, social distancing, monitoring students' health and safety, professional development, communication plan, material acquisition, and contact tracing. So the public has this. Everybody has this in their email. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on each area, but if you see something you have a question about, please, please let us know. This is a group that worked independently with me on the plan. I don't know that the group ever, ever got together at one time. Matter of fact, I say they can't, but they all set eyes from different lenses, talking about things that were important, and they continue to work on it as well. So I wanted to say thank you to that group, including the Bucks County Department of Health, Dr. David Dansker, who always answers my phone, or email, or my text message whenever I call. He's been very helpful. So basically, you have the areas of cleaning, sanitation, disinfectant. So I'll give you some general ideas of what we're going to do and who's going to be responsible for it. So we have the high-touch areas, or shut off water fountains, clean lunch tables, clean their own desks, sanitize material between student use. Those buildings that don't, permit the students to bring water bottles, buses, high-touch areas, et cetera. Tops of lockers at Ashamonee High School. So this continues on. We're going to have a presentation about this piece, which is far more complicated than what I talk about here. We're going to increase ventilation in classrooms with outside air. We were going to change to a particular type of filter. I believe it's called MERV 13. We might be able to outdo that. Is it really MERV 13, John? I got that right? Cool. 13? So these are ventilation systems, and we're going to have a presentation on that after me that even takes us to a different level. Moving on. I know it's more difficult to read, but this talks about the distance between students, and we haven't decided on that plan yet, but obviously, it's not going to be the full-in. I think you can read the tea leaves from that. And various things that we'll be doing, including signage, hallway directional arrows, and those floor dots that'll help students self-walk and make sure they're, you know, not more than a dot closer to anybody else. Restrict visitors. Remanage recess, so people don't group together, locker areas, et cetera. Limit the sharing of material. So to save money, we used to share boxes of crayons. We're not going to do that anymore. Everyone's going to get their own box of crayon, et cetera. Those types of things. Next piece talks about transportation, which I think we already went into. One of the biggest concerns I get is phone calls is in the last area, and we could use some help with that. What do we do for families who need childcare and we're not in school either at all or every other day? So we are lacking in support for them in that area. So if anyone has anything that can send me an email, I'd very much appreciate helping people compile a list for that. The bottom line there, we're going to go to boxed lunches, better than you thought boxed lunches were when you were a kid, but pizza, chicken fingers and stuff, where it's grab-and-go so the kids don't have to go through the cafeteria line and serve themselves. So that's been in place for a while. Monitoring student health. The first-period teacher will remind the students what the symptoms are, and if they feel symptomatic, they should go to the nurse. The Pennsylvania Department of Health agreed that it's not logistically possible to actually check students before they come to school, temperature, and ask them the questions, whether it be on a bus or in a building. So parents will self-monitor and report. We're working on an app that helps them remind that, and they can report to us. Then there's a whole series of procedures about what we're going to do when someone is symptomatic with the nurse's area, isolating them, making sure the nurse has the proper equipment. And in that case, once you have someone you're suspected, that's where we call and ask assistance for the Pennsylvania, or the Bucks County Department of Health. And this gets into contact tracing, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Basically, the goal is to know where every kid is seated throughout the day. So we'll have seating charts in the cafeteria, in the classrooms. So if someone were to become positive, we'd at least be able to have a general idea what was going on in that particular classroom or in that particular lunchroom to help facilitate the Bucks County Department of Health's contact tracing. One of our biggest concerns is identifying those who are most at risk, both staff and students. So I think once we say what the start of school looks like, I think they're going to come forward, but we have a job to make sure we find the students first. I think the staff will self-advocate for themselves. So fortunately, we have some good people on that. Our building principals, Mr. Devlin, Ms. Burkhalder, and our director of HR, Ms. Kozick, taking care of that piece. Face coverings, as we talked about before, it is now under a Pennsylvania order, so face coverings will be when they get on the bus throughout the day. So now we have to plan for mask breaks in some way where they're not close to each other. Have not fully figured that out yet, but that is on our list of things to do as to what that looks like. Fortunately, Bucks County purchased us 15,000 face shields. So students will, if they want to, they can bring their own masks. If they don't want to, we'll have them provided, but we'll provide every staff member and student a plastic face shield that, from the lens of the Pennsylvania Department of Health, they do the same thing. They do the same thing. So thank you to Bucks County for assisting with that. You're going to see more staff in buildings. We were able, as far as deploying district staff to help out throughout the buildings. We're going to extend some people's day, our staff nurses, our recess aides, if they wish to, so they can help us out with those particular areas. We were fortunate enough that Kathy Christie, our IT director, saw an opportunity to, at reasonable expense, to keep our desktops that we can use to help our teachers and our families that may not have access to computers. So we've acquired them, which gives us much more technology flexibility as we move into this uncertain times. So professional development, both for students and staff, things we have to make sure everybody can do. Communication. Mr. Stanley, at some point, we'll get him doing his good stuff with some public service announcements on how to do things, both with our kids and that are enjoyable to watch. And here's the list of Mr. Parentano was talking about, things we've purchased. Fogging sanitize machines. I hope they're called that, but we have them coming in. Plexiglas is already installed around those high-contact areas in the main office. Face masks, face shields, dots, floor arrows, tissues, hand sanitizer, hand sanitizing stations, stanchions to block things, individual student desks. We're trying to rent five to 10 additional buses to make sure our fleet's up and running, and then we replaced 10 buses, as you recall, at the end of last year. That will help us as well. Finally, the concept of contact tracing seems to be counterintuitive, so I'll take my first shot at it. If a staff member, I'll use a staff member, becomes positive or a student, the process would be to identify those areas to help the Bucks County Department of Health do their job. And then they'd want a list of people who were in contact with the positive individual for 15 minutes or more in close proximity. That seems to be the line that I heard from not only Bucks County, from Pennsylvania, and from the CDC. And then if they were in contact with that individual for more than 15 minutes, we would identify the name and whether that was a masked contact, where both people masks, or and/or whether that was an indoor or outdoor contact. At that point, we'd call the Bucks County Department of Health and get the experts involved to let them make the decisions what's best for those individuals. And we'll facilitate that with seating charts and being able to provide that information to save them some valuable time. Lots of emails today, thank you, throughout the week, just pointing out, most asked question is more live streaming and synchronous stuff. It's coming. It's coming. It's coming. The models we've developed are baseline models with a lot of options ready to go. The people who are best to employ those options and make them work aren't working right now. They'll be coming back, the 1,100 people who were on summer break. So we're waiting to get them back to make sure we can do that part right. So we'll expand to that throughout. It's there. It works. We just need some of our experts back. Masked what-if questions, a lot of masked what-if questions. What if they can't wear them? What if they don't want to wear them? What if they have a doctor's note? All those questions are still being fleshed out by not only us, but the other 499 districts in the state and various other states. So we don't have answers to those questions yet. What I can tell you is we're not going to vilify a student, or make a student, you know, disciplined if they're unable to, unwilling, or unable to with a doctor's note. A senior unwilling to, maybe. Maybe. We'll have a conversation and straighten them out a little bit. Locker and locker areas, they're probably the most outside the cafeteria, the biggest congregation area, so we really do have to close them down. So students will have classroom sets of books. We have plenty of books. We'll have to worry about how to make sure they stay clean as well. So by eliminating that bigger problem, we create a smaller problem within the classroom. IEPs and GIEPs, all things that have to be addressed once we get going in either of these two non-full models. What I can say is that there are certain groups of kids, if we're not in all the time, will come in all the time, depending on their need. And there's a chance, if we don't come to school, that our staff can still come in, which presents a whole bunch of different opportunities for us as compared to the spring. Plan B, the second most asked question, is Plan B, the daily rotation. I think I talked to this with Tina for a second. I've given up on the AB/AB. I hear you. We're probably going to, if we go with that, we'll talk later this week, some type of consistent by-day model to help parents and students make sure they know what day it is, whether it be AB/AB, then a Friday, or AA, off, then BB. And I'll explain that more later in the week. I also have heard clearly that parents wanted to know sooner than later. I underestimated the need to get that information out sooner. So by the end of this week, I will have a recommendation that I will present to the board, and hopefully, the board will approve for the opening of school based on our current stuff, based on our current circumstances. So I will have that out by the end of the week, once the cabinet and the administrators vet that tomorrow. And the final piece, a lot of questions about attendance and rules and what-ifs. It's a pandemic. We're not going to hold your kid accountable to a rule that you can't help. So don't worry about that stuff. We will hold them harmless and make sure that they can do what they need to do based on your best ability to do it. So I don't think we have to worry about that. So that is the preliminary health and safety plan without a definitive answer on what we're going to do to open. Again, if I had to give you an idea as to what that email on Friday looks like, probably a staggered start, where we can teach kids what to do and be safe in school, then finally bring them together in some type of alternating day model, and then hopefully, that works sufficient enough to be able to bring them in. So I'll get that email out to the community and the board by the end of the week, and hopefully, that will be a plan that can stick. All right? I'll open it up to board questions, or...
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any members of the boards have questions for Dr. McGee?
Can you give any insights with some of the other schools? Has any other school districts, like, made their decisions and are sticking to it? I mean, I know that there's a couple, but...
Yes. A lot of them have made their decision. I just saw today that Philadelphia decided to go one line through November. I know Council Rock delayed their start of school through the end of September, at which point they're coming back in a hybrid model. Quakertown delayed two weeks. I can't recall what Central Bucks did, but I would like to say thank you. A lot of their decisions were made in this room at this time with motions on the floor. So I very much appreciate you letting the cabinet, the administrators, and us work through this and come up with a plan that actually works well for us. So there's all kinds of plans out there, and a lot of them are actually delaying the start of school for a significant period of time. And if that trend continues, it's going to weigh into the psyche of our parents and students, which is a big part of deciding how to open. So we'll have to consider that as well.
Seeing no other questions, I just want to add some commentary. Dr. McGee, I appreciate all the hard work that you and your staff have put into this. I appreciate the Shammany community. We all do. The amount of people that responded to the survey was outstanding, and I know that really helped the administration as it worked through their plan. So thank you to the Shammany community. I understand your intention to release your recommendation. I would just remind you that the board also needs options. So when you release that recommendation, make sure it's accompanied by options, and then, you know, the board will have a chance to deliberate individually and then meet and make a final decision. So thank you for your presentation. At this time, we're going to move on to a presentation from SiteLogic IQ, Mr. Damian Spar, on COVID improvements for our HVA systems in our schools.
Good evening. I'm actually smiling to see you all here live tonight. You just can't tell behind my mask. My name is Damian Spar. I am with Reynolds, which is now SiteLogic, and I've been working for the district for quite some time. I am here to talk about indoor air quality improvements that you can make as a result of what we're going through now with the worldwide health crisis. I do have a presentation that I'd like to put up on the screen, if I can do that. Mr. Parentano, do you know if Mr. Kovitz received a...
Good question. Mr. Kovitz, did that PDF come through?
Yes, sir, it did. I have it, and I am looking at it right now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. The next slide's our agenda slide, and what we're going to talk about is why indoor air quality matters. I don't happen to have, thank you very much. Why indoor air quality matters, some options for consideration, information on those options, a process for moving ahead. There's been some interest about AtmosAir, which is one of the products that could potentially be used to really mitigate the virus and improve indoor air quality. Thank you. And questions and answers, and I actually have an AtmosAir representative here tonight to answer questions. Now, if I get the button right. There we go. That's great. Okay. So it looks like my slides are a little ill-formatted, but we'll push through this. Indoor air quality improvements, improve cognitive learning, they reduce absences of students, they reduce sickness in staff and teachers, under normal circumstances, when we're worried about influenza and mold and pollen and dust. But in the current COVID-19 world, the suggestions that have been placed out there and now are actually changing to be modified, they tell us we want to increase outdoor air and upgrade our filters. And we just talked a little bit earlier when Dr. McGee said that is in process by operations now. So we're going to touch on that, but we're going to talk about measures that go beyond filtering and more outside air, and really actually neutralize things like the virus that causes COVID-19. So our options for review, the first two are under implementation right now by the district. That is changing from what is a MERV 8 to a MERV 13 filter. MERV is really a measurement of filter efficiency. So the higher the number, the better. And what happens is your number goes higher, is more pressure is required to push the air through the filter. And HVAC systems in schools are only designed to have so much pressure in them. And going up to MERV 13 is going to be about the limit that you have in the district. You also modify your filter change schedules to make sure that you're changing those regularly and often, as your operations has done for years. Outdoor air increases and air changes effectively means we're going to bring in as much fresh air as we can bring in without making the humidity too high, or making the temperatures too high when we have warm temperatures outside, or the temperatures too cold when it's cold outside. More fresh air, more air changes means it's more like being outside. We're going to talk more about enhancing that with something called bipolar ionization. Bipolar ionization effectively puts ions in the air. Those ions, they coagulate particles in the air and drop them out of the air, put them in filters, but importantly, they kill things like viruses, and they're documented to kill things like the COVID virus, not only in the air, but on surfaces. Ultraviolet germicidal irradiation, or UVGI, is ultraviolet lights that can be put in the ductwork to kill viruses in the air as they flow by the light. It can kill the viruses on top of the filters themselves. It can be put in spaces and really pointed in the high areas of the space as the air mixes in the space. It will kill organisms that are in the air. And there are other applications of it, and there's a gentleman that's here tonight that I'm aware of that's going to speak about this in public comment, so he'll be able to get into that a lot more than I do tonight. Or you can have combinations of bipolar ionization and UVGI, which we would be looking at should we be asked to continue our studies here. So really quickly, what's being implemented now is the filter upgrades, the filter change program, the outdoor air. These are the most cost-effective things to do. They don't have noise issues. There's a couple limitations, like I mentioned, due to pressure for the filters. And the outdoor area, you have to maintain being comfortable. So those make a lot of sense.
I have a question, if I can interrupt for a second?
Sure.
The, so if I'm going from MERV 8 up to MERV 13, you mentioned that, obviously, my air conditioning unit has to work harder to overcome the pressure caused by the better filtration system, correct?
Yes. Your fans may have to work a little harder to create more pressure. That's correct.
Okay. So, but going to MERV 13 gives me better efficiency in what regard? What do I get that's more efficient? More efficient filtration?
You effectively get a better filter that can filter out smaller things from the air.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that.
So the question is, that's efficiency in regard to filtering out the bad stuff? Again, if I have to, if my air conditioning unit has to work harder, what does that mean to the efficiency of the, you know, the motor, the air conditioning unit? So obviously, my electricity costs would go up something, somewhat. I'm sorry, I can't hear you there?
Thank you. I wasn't aware that my mic was off. It could mean that your fan speeds need to be higher. It could mean that we have to adjust certain dampers and things to open up the air in the ductwork a little bit more. But yes, it does translate to more electrical use and cost, and potentially, some additional wear and tear on motors. I would say the latter is less.
Yeah, I can say, in the businesses that I've seen, like, working in a lot of clean rooms in hospitals, when we've, you know, the amp draw tends to be higher in those fans, and, you know, that's the deal, is you kind of try to find that balance before you hit the overheat on the van, which you know. I'm just saying that for the general public. There are adjustments that have to be made when you change filtration system. You increase the pressure, the resistance of airflow. There's other issues, like now you're slowing your airflow across coils. How's that affecting it? That affects the humidity, how much humidity you can remove with AC systems, et cetera, et cetera. But they're all things that would be considered. I mean, you don't just go in and change a filter. There's things you have to do to compensate for that change.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, obviously, we're not pursuing efficiency at the cost of other things. I understand why it's preferable to filter things out, but again, I'd want to be able to see what that would cost us on the other end, because we're going to have to pay for our air conditioning units to do more. But yes, obviously, there are things to be adjusted, so thank you.
And I did speak to Mr. Trasko about this at length, and he is aware of these issues and will be monitoring for them so that he can adjust accordingly. So that's very important. If I could have, maybe I can do that myself. Oh, there we go. So this is to your point, and these are the different variations of MERV filters from MERV 1 through MERV 20. So you can see at MERV 13, you're really about at the 65 percentile level of really how constrained you can be with that, getting particles that are smaller and smaller. And you're approaching things that are in hospitals, you're not necessarily in clean rooms, but you're not guaranteed to filter out all the viruses. That's really not the point. It's going to filter out, it's going to do as good a job as your system can do. The, what I call active options are things that kill biologicals in the air. So the ultraviolet light applications kill those biologicals in the return airstream or in the space. Sometimes these, like bipolar ionization, have a higher first cost than simply adding more outdoor air or changing filters. They do have cleaning components, they have components where you have to maintain them and replace lamps, things like that. And you have to be careful about how people are exposed to ultraviolet light, depending on which type of ultraviolet light there is. Bipolar ionization kills biologicals in the air supply, in the airstream, as well as in the space. There are tests that these types of equipment are killing biologicals on the surface. So basically, if the air is touching it with ionized, with the ions, it is killing the viruses to a greater extent than 99% in laboratory tests. This doesn't mean at all that you install this and you stop wearing masks, or you don't clean regularly, or anything like that. It's just a much greater step in creating a space that's clean. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, but bipolar ionization has similar cons. There's a first cost to it, there's maintenance, there's always a concern about ozone being added. I can tell you that the ones that we're looking at do not add ozone to the point where it is greater than outdoor air. So the ozone is the same or less inside the building as is outside the building. This slide shows you what those bipolar ionization systems look like. In this case, you're seeing AtmosAir systems, and those are tubes inside of which those ions are being created. You can see on the left where that assembly is mounted in ductwork, and the air is going over those tubes and being ionized, and then it's being sent out into the space. So there, as I noted, there have been tests on viruses that AtmosAir has shown that in 98%, destruction of those viruses within 15 minutes, and once you start to approach an hour, it's nearly complete. And there are letters from, that AtmosAir has from Dr. Tierney from NYU about that, which are, you know, belabor to get into tonight. The UVGI does something similar, but it uses ultraviolet light to remove and destroy microorganisms. And it effectively inactivates them, and then they get caught in the filter, they end up dropping out or being flushed out through exhaust. They can be placed, as you see on the left, the lights can be placed inside ductwork so that as air goes past those lights, the air gets sanitized into the effect that ultraviolet light can sanitize the air of those microorganisms. It can be placed to shine on filters so that anything that gets caught in the filter gets killed as well. It can be placed in the upper area of a room, like this auditorium, where it can be placed up at the top, and as the air mixes in the auditorium, the air that's up at the top gets the ultraviolet light shining on it, and those organisms are then killed. And there are other applications. Again, Lieutenant Colonel will talk a little bit about those tonight, as he informed me before the meeting. about those tonight, as he informed me before the meeting. So if, if we were to move forward with looking at implementing these options, first, operations will implement the filter and outdoor air options. We have begun, because we have had the drawings, because we've been working here, a review for options and pricing for bipolar ionization and ultraviolet light applications. Excuse me. We'll, we'll conduct a walkthrough of any facilities that we need to finalize everything that we need and basically do that very quickly so that we could give an option to the board. Importantly, this can be done through your current Giza contract that you have with our company. We can order equipment through the Giza. We can install it. We can execute it. It's probably, I'm not sure how you would do it faster under any other procurement. You happen to be fortunate that if you'd like to do this, you could do it relatively quickly. And I have spoken to District Council. They're aware that the Giza law update 2016 actually has a measure about improving out, or indoor air quality. And so this fits within that Giza. Couple of things that, that you have to look at about using bipolar ionization or UV, we would want to get it designed and understand what it is and get it ordered. Some components you can get very quickly. Some that are built can take as much as eight weeks. We would want to start that installation as soon as the components would be ready and be available and start putting them in. If the students are here, we would do it at night. If the students are not here, we could look at doing it during the day. We would use potentially several different subcontractors and crews in multiple buildings so that we kept up with the arrival of the equipment and installed it as quickly as possible. We would prioritize buildings with the district in the event that we got a whole lot of equipment at once. So for bipolar ionization, with the use of some UV, the cost range at this point that I can give you is about a dollar to $2 per square foot for full facility coverage. That means every room. If you look at that at about $1.50 a square foot for all of your square footage, that's in the range of about $2 million. I don't know what your current student and staff population is, but I bet if you do the math, this probably is about $200 a person, or maybe less. It's, when you look at it that way, it's pretty shocking how little it is to add that level of protection. So we've been asked to talk a little bit about AtmosAir. They're being considered because the independent laboratory tests have confirmed the mitigation, the destruction of biologicals, not only in the air but on surfaces. It has UL listings, underwriters laboratory listings, that confirm that the system does not add ozone to the environment. And there's a pretty robust monitoring system with that. I have with me Kevin Fahey, who's the Vice President at AtmosAir. And before we get too much further, I'm going to show you a quick video that describes how this works because it's important to understand what this is doing. So let me see if I can make that work from here. If I'm going to be able to, if I get some help from.
Here's how it works. When outdoor air comes into a building, oxygen molecules are carried over specially designed bipolar ion tubes. An energy field converts these molecules into positively and negatively charged ions. These ions then travel into occupied spaces to seek out oppositely charged bad air particles, VOCs and odors. When they combine, it forces them to break down and drop out of our breathing range to reduce contaminant levels and improve our health and wellness. And to show you it's working, our AtmosAire indoor environment sensors and monitoring system allow you to see your air quality in real time. Only AtmosAir gets you cleaner, mountain fresh inside air and sustainable energy savings, plus proven results that remove up to 95% of ultrafine particles and up to 90% of VOCs.
So the interesting thing about this is, and this is, I've chatted with my friends at AtmosAir about it, is that the, the video isn't caught up with the testing that's been done about the coronavirus. There are several school districts in the area and in the state that are looking at doing this right now because they've seen this, whether it's AtmosAir or whether it's even looking at some ultraviolet light. The testing is out there, and the, the thing that you have to remember is this is not a short-term gain. This is not, it's great for COVID. It's, this is going to be great for the long term because you're going to have healthier building, you're going to have healthier students, you're going to have healthier staff, and all of the benefits that we talked about earlier. This wasn't done for years because we never got to the place where we needed something like this. It just so happens that technology is sitting there and has been being used, and it happens to work well against coronaviruses and influenza. I'm going to put the screen back on for a moment and work quickly through, I think I am. There we go. So this is what you've shut, what, what you just saw, so I'm going to skip through that. You can see these tubes installed in large ductwork, in medium-sized ductwork in the middle, and even in small ductwork like you might have in many of the classrooms. There, there are sizes that work for all of that. This, depending on where it's placed and how far away it is from where it gets discharged into the room, it makes the decision on how large the tubes are, how many tubes you need. The, Mr. Fahey can get into some of that detail, but there's an optimum amount of ions that you want in the room. Interestingly enough, these ions have, have, they degrade over time. The ions don't stick around forever. So in, in a five-minute timeframe, you still have half of the ions present. And in five minutes, that air gets out and through the room and is on its way back. It, it, it's pretty robust. So here are some other ways that you can see what these things look like so you understand where they are. There were some questions about how, how do you know it's working? There are ties into your building automation system. There are lights that you can visually inspect by looking at the outside to know that it's working. And there are also monitors that will show you, I'm going to skip ahead to that, monitors that will show you how they work. And they do that not by counting ions, but by finding out if there's any particulate floating in the air. If there's anything floating in the air, this isn't working the way it's supposed to. If there's nothing floating in the air, then it's working properly. So it's measuring not the ions themselves, but really the results that affect people. So there's an awful lot that I could get into about this, but I would really like to introduce Kevin Fahey to answer any questions, and I will answer any other questions that are not about AtmosAir.
Sir, David, you, you mentioned, I think I saw VOX in there too.
I'm sorry, Mr. Allen.
I said, I think I saw through the paperwork that this is also effective on volatile organics?
That's correct.
Okay. That's interesting.
John, you know, since you are an actual building engineer and specialize in environmental systems, I'd like to see if you could take the lead on these questions from the technical point of view, and can, you know, address them.
But I have worked with them, seen them installed. I'm well aware they've become very popular right at the moment. It's also about a lead time. So, yeah, I'd be glad to.
Thank you. Mr. Fahey, I appreciate you taking the time to be here. I know you drove down from Connecticut, and we do appreciate that. I've looked at the information. A lot of my concerns are around how your independent, your units fit a lot of our independent units. You know, as Mr. Spar knows, they did most of our Giza work, if not all of it. They did, I think, all of the AC retrofits. A lot of our buildings don't have large central ductwork. They have independent units per the classroom. Could you just talk a little bit about how, you know, that, that's going to work in, in our situation?
Thank you. And as far as the systems, they're scalable, literally from a few hundred square feet to our largest installation's 1.8 million. So, and it's just, it's different units, multiple units. You saw the little, the little unit that was on the screen there in a, it's a unit ventilator, which is popular in some schools. That literally, that's about four inches by, it's three and a half by five and a half inches. So it fits in an inch and a half thick. You want to put that on the supply side of the air system because you want the air flowing over the tubes. So it takes the ions into, to the space, the classroom, if, if that's the case. The, an ion is, is nothing more than a charged oxygen molecule. So they, they say ions, but it's just literally oxygen that gains or loses an electron. And the success of AtmosAir is they can create an ion with a charge that will last 300 seconds, unlike any other technology out there. So that means that this, this ion can travel throughout the entire space. They, Tulane University two weeks ago came out with a research that these ions can, these, the virus can live 16 hours in suspended in air. And so it's very important, and these, these, the virus is literally .02 microns in size. If it doesn't attach to a larger particle or a droplet, it's a good chance it won't be captured by a MERV 13 filter. So it can just literally recirculate throughout your, your air system. So it's important that you have the system like ours on the supply side. We say seek and destroy. It goes out and finds, it literally saturates your space with these positive and negative oxygen molecules, and will eradicate microbials like virus and bacteria and mold spores. It will mitigate VOCs. What it does with the VOCs is it just literally turns it into CO2 and water vapor. No chemical byproduct. So, so VOC, volatile organic compound, and those are odors that you would, and those are off-gas by everything in this room, including the people. So anyway, I know you asked about scalability and size. We, there are very, 90% of all HVAC systems out there, we're able to fit one of our components inside.
And as far as the technology itself, of course, we're, want to increase the air quality in our rooms regardless. And as Mr. Spar stated, this is an infrastructure project. This isn't just a deal with COVID. But if we're going to make the investment at this time, of course, COVID is our main concern. I've read some information on your website. I did take the opportunity to dig a little bit deeper. And they specifically talk about COVID, but they don't talk about how it traps, I mean, you just explained about the ions, but how is COVID different than any other virus, like the flu? You talk about the difference between envelope viruses and, and a different type of virus. I can't remember the terminology right now. But I'm concerned about, you know, that this really is going to give us a level of security in this COVID environment.
So with viruses, there's two primary types. There's one that's called an enveloped virus, and one's non-enveloped. And you've seen all the images of COVID on, that's got that ball and spikes. Well, that's envelope. That, those, that ball and spikes, it's, that's a lipid membrane. It's a protein shell that's protecting the virus. And those spikes are literally the, the attraction point for the ions. They're also the, the issues when they get inside of somebody's, their receptors, and when they get inside your body, that's what causes the infection at those same sites. So what happens with these, these negative and positive oxygen molecules, they surround this, these spikes. It grabs a hydrogen, the positive hydrogen will go toward a negative oxygen, and it forms what is called a hydroxyl radical, OH negative. This OH negative is highly reactive. It literally pierces the, the membrane, membrane envelope shell of that virus, gets inside, it disrupts the RNA of the molecule. It does not impact DNA in any way. That basically inactivates it, destroys it, doesn't allow it to reproduce, doesn't vaporize it. So this molecule could then travel, get on a surface, be in your air system. But if it gets inside a body, a person or an animal, it can infect you. So that's, that's the science behind inactivating, inactivating a virus.
And in addition, he mentioned the ozone production, or non-ozone production in, in his slides. You know, any ionizer that I've ever seen, and I understand they're not commercial products, there is an ozone component. What is it about your product that doesn't produce additional ozone in the environment?
It's a great question. It's one that we hear about 10 times a day. Ozone's a concern. To be UL 867 certified, you have to show no measurable ozone, meaning ozone less than 50 parts per billion. Typical environment, outdoor air could have 10, 20 parts per billion, but it doesn't usually get as high as 50. OSHA allows up to 100 parts per billion. So we literally test, what happens, any sort of high voltage has a tendency to produce ozone. So some of the products that will create the ions by a higher voltage, 4, 5,000 volts, up to 10,000 volts, are going to produce ozone. Products that have certain media and an imbalance between negative and positive with a higher negative ion base are going to produce more ozone. So what we've done is we've, we have a patented composite tube. It forms what's called a dielectric barrier discharge. It's an energy field around this tube that prevents current from jumping from one metal object to the other. That's, creates this energy field, and it's an even balance, creates an even balance of negative and positive ions at a voltage down around 2,000 volts. Do we, we've had it tested right at the tube for an eight-hour period of time, and the test came back that the ozone level was anywhere from zero to 18, averaging about eight parts per billion. So is it some immeasurable amount? Yes. But it's, the, eight parts per billion is, is less than most ambient air situations. So we've taken it a step further and, and literally tested inside the buildings where we have our systems, compared that with ambient, and in every case, the inside is no, is no higher than the, the ambient in as far as ozone.
One thing that I heard recently regarding this, one thing that I heard recently regarding this, and please tell me where I'm off-base, was if you make a comparison to things that produce ozone every day around us, photocopiers produce ozone, refrigerators produce ozone, and this is in, in, in the same area of a refrigerator producing ozone. Is that something that I might have heard Brian say?
All right. At this time, any other board members, Mr. Allen?
Um, when I first came across this technology, which is longer back than I care to remember, it, it was, I mean, they were even selling the little cubes for, you could put in your living room. Remember that? And, and, you know, then your whole house would smell like you'd been through a lightning storm. It's the ozone that we're all familiar with. The commercial units that I was coming across were going in the return duct because the idea at that time was that you were creating the charge to attract particles. So the small particles would get larger and heavier, drop out or fall into the filter. At that time, the conversation of it actually killing, you know, as you're saying, vaporizing, and you know, and some of the harsh requirements we talked about, that was never brought up. So, so that's interesting to me to hear that you're recommending putting them in the supply duct. There, maybe you could elaborate on that. The reason, the reason we want to go in the supply duct is we want to saturate the space that people occupy. So the supply air is coming into your space, that's where you want the ions. We want the ions to work at the source of contamination, the places where the, the contaminants, whether they're VOCs or a virus or, or something else, is in the space. If you, if you put it in the return duct, or you put it in the coil section of an, of an air handler, you're waiting for the air to come there to be cleaned. If you're doing two or three air changes an hour, there's a long time. There's a lot of contamination that can happen. If you're saturate, saturating the space, literally somebody could infect a surface, and within minutes, there's no guarantee, but that potentially could be inactivated by these ions that saturate that space. So that's, that's the reason for the design of supply side versus, you know, on the return.
I, I had a question from Mr. Fahey, just for some clarification. So if I
So if I have, just so I understand the process, the, 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 the virus itself, if it's, if it's in the system, are we, we're not trapping it in a filter, we're, we're actually destroying it using either the UV or the ionization, correct?
That's correct. You're inactivating the virus so it could not be, infect anybody. You're, it doesn't, it doesn't disappear. And it, you don't have to catch it in a filter. You can inactivate it. It could fall to the floor. It could stay on someone's clothing, but it, it no longer would be able to infect.
Okay. So it's, it's basically rendering it inert. So, okay. Thank you.
Another question I had for that is with, with the way, again, going back to the units I'm familiar with, they tended to be a lot of maintenance as far as cleaning. Or now, and again, that was in the return duct, and you're, you know, because you're collecting particles, they're actually getting back to the, the electrodes. Speak to that.
Sure. A lot of the early ionizers, at least in the US, were single polarity ionizers. You create a negative ion, you'd have a positive collector plate, and then it, you'd collect a lot of particles on that plate, you'd have to clean the plate. This is different. This is creating, doing the work out in the space, and does one, when it agglomerates or coalesces particles, then these are going to come, become larger and they'll either fall to the floor, or they'll be large enough to get picked up, certainly get picked up by a MRF-13 filter. But there's, but there's no, when you have positive and negative, you're literally neutralized surfaces. So nothing collects, doesn't collect on the inside of the duct, it doesn't collect on the tube. Museums will put it in, so the dust doesn't collect on their artwork. You'll see computer monitors, TV monitors that have less dust on them because of the surfaces are neutralized. Every surface has a charge, and these ions will neutralize that.
None of the maintenance, because frankly, it wasn't done. You know, it, it worked for maybe a year, two years, and then, you know, I, I don't want to see us do that, and I also don't want to overburden our, already overburdened maintenance department.
In recent conversations that I've been having at another district about this, a couple of things. One, only in an environment like a smoky casino, where you'd have smoke particles, do you start to worry about that with cleaning? Not at all in a school. The, the service component of it is the life of the tube. So the tubes get changed out over a certain amount of time, and it isn't that the tube burns out like a light bulb. It reduces its inefficiency. Starting at two years, it starts to reduce. And then you have to look and see how well the system's performing, and you get on a maintenance schedule that way. An important thing that we didn't touch on, because I was rushing to be respectful of time, was the question about ozone and, is there any ozone? There, the monitors that we would install as a part of this program will, will detect ozone, as they will also detect these particles in the air. So we'll know that there's no ozone greater than outside. We'll know that the particles are not in the air, therefore it is working. If we start to see a difference in that, then we know we have to do some service or check some things. I think checking these, not necessarily changing tubes out, but checking them, when filters get checked, they would be part of your preventive maintenance program. Is the light on? Does it, you know, did you walk in there with your meter and everything seemed okay? Okay, you're good. And by the way, my, my understanding of the system is when air is not flowing, ions are not being generated. So there's an, there's an air, there's an air speed indicator basically on, on the unit that says if air's going by, it's on. If air is not going by, it's off. So it's not generating ions that are going anywhere and working on the life of that tube.
Mr. Sorillo, you have a question?
Yes. Your systems, what, what buildings are they currently located in? What types of areas?
So is the, there's different systems. All, all different, all products work on either 110 or a 220 voltage. And then our smallest products will work on a 24 volt. The amperage is less than a half an amp on all the different products.
Now, let me, not to interrupt you, can you give me a reference of where your systems are currently installed?
Of where they're installed?
Hospitals, libraries, schools, or any currently located in schools?
Dozens of schools. I mean, in the past month, we've installed a half a dozen. We probably installed 20 last summer. And, I mean, prior to COVID, it's, it was mainly for health and wellness and energy savings, because you can, you may not want to do it today, but in the future, post-COVID, you can actually decrease your outside air ventilation through ASHRAE 62.1 IEQ procedure. But to answer the question, we're in hospitals, we're in office buildings, we're in sports and fitness, we're in hotels, casinos, airports, and we have about 80 million square feet of space we're serving. And again, in the, with the COVID pandemic, we've probably done about 7.5 million just in the last couple of months.
Okay. So now, the, the next question is the, the, you, you discussed how your systems are very effective. Is there any evidence of that effectiveness? Is there any studies, independent studies? Is there any information that you can provide to us? Or more importantly, can the general public, is there, is there a website? Is there any place where they can go to read up on it, just to make sure that they understand that the claims that you're making are, are valid and are true?
As far as tests, we've done a lot of third-party laboratory tests, and we've done it in each type of contaminant. We've done it with particulates, we've done it with VOCs, we've done it with bacteria, viruses, mold spores. Most of that's available on our website. We've had a Dr. Phil Tierney, who's a part of the World Virology Association and a former head of immunology and epidemiology at NYU Medical Center. He did it, a white paper that's available on our website, which will, just talks about, it confirms a lot of the claims that we make and answers the question you were just asking.
Thank you that you've answered my questions. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Hearing no other questions, I just have two final questions and we'll, and we'll finish up. Damian spoke about the lead time required. If the school board, you know, decides to move forward with this, I'm sure you have other orders, but you know, we care about our priority. How assured can we be that you'll make the, the lead time that Damian spoke of for the, for the ordered items we'll need?
Well, there's, the sooner you make that decision, the better for both of us. But the, I mean, right now, we had the, we've started ramping up our productivity in early March. And we upgraded again in April, and then again in May. And now we're, the most recent upgrades, we're anticipating schools coming back online, both in the K through 12 and the college and university. So there is a six to eight week, depending on the products, lead time right now, but it won't get any greater than that. It's, we use a contract manufacturer, it's a billion-dollar company called Keytronics, who does all of our manufacturing in Fayetteville, Arkansas. We do not all of it. There's some products that we still manufacture in Tempe, Arizona. So they're all US-based, so we don't have to wait for product to come through customs and, and that sort of thing. So we're confident in, in the lead times that we've talked about.
And how, how long has your company been producing these products?
We brought the product over from Sweden in 2004. We've started the testing in 2005. We've got over 20 patents from different technology improvements we've made. And the technology that we bought literally was in existence starting in the early 70s in, in Sweden.
Mr. Spar, at this time, if the board is to consider moving forward with this, what is the process by which we will do, could do so?
If I, if I'm requested by the administration on behalf of the board to put together a, an amendment for consideration by the board after a 10-day notice of advertisement, as we usually do with your administration solicitor, we would move to do that as quickly as possible. If we had that type of direction from the board, I would work with AtmosAir to start the, the process of procurement with laying out what it is that we're going to buy and having our orders really ready to be going, kind of pre, pre-set up. So the process would be that, as a board, if that's what you'd wish to see, if, if you told the administration that, we would abide and move quickly.
So that, that would mean that best-case scenario, sooner we enter into an agreement, the sooner we get the supply, soon as we get the supply, you can start doing the install. If it were to happen on the most expedited plan we could do, after a 10-day advertisement, and you would have the products ordered, we would receive them, I would assume sometime mid-September, they would start incoming. I assume buildings would be staged on, it's not something you can install all at once, but is it feasible to say that by sometime in October, we, we would have a decent amount of our buildings up and protected?
What I would suggest is, anything that we can get in late September, we would get installed. As I noted, as we were talking through this, we will install it as soon as we have it, wherever it can be installed, so that we're moving and we're not waiting. Depending on lead times, if, if you have eight weeks, and really that put, that eight weeks puts us out into October with, with having everything, I want to have several crews working. So the thing that you need to believe is, this is not something that gets installed before school starts, but it is not something that takes us past the end of the year. Depending on how fast we get things and what priority we take, we will put things in as fast as we can go. I don't want to tell you that it's only going to take a month to install everything through the district. When I plan these out in my head, I plan them out to be in October, November, up to Christmas, if we need to tweak things through the holiday and we're finished. But the idea is that we get them in as quickly as we can, and to the point where, I, I don't think that the district necessarily wants us to work overtime and double time to do it, but that we get them in as quickly as the units are available. So if there's a staggered process, where we're getting some units earlier and some units later, I, I don't want units sitting around. I want them going into the schools, turned on and making sure they function, and moving on to the next one. I know that several units can be installed in, in one shift by, by a crew. It isn't, you know, one, one unit per, it's not long like that, but I think it's going to take a couple of months. It's going to take that, that October into December timeframe to make sure we've got everything, but we would prioritize that with the administration.
Mr. Allen?
Damian, I know this, these qualify, excuse me, under our GISA, especially with the amendment to it, that, you know, you're improving indoor air quality. What is the feasibility of this being covered under COVID remediation refunds laws?
We're, we're active in looking to see if there are ways that you can put permanent improvements in and get either CARES money to, to use against that or FEMA money. I think, I believe that FEMA you can't use for permanent improvements. CARES is in question. The question is, are you going to get more CARES money? How's that going to look? I know there's consideration at the state, and it depends on how it looks, but I can tell you that there are folks lobbying to get reimbursement for school districts in Pennsylvania, if they're going to put in long-term improvements for this type of thing. Now, that would have to be legislated as a part of a budget, but there are folks out there that are interested in doing that. As we did when we did our GISA project, we will assist with any way that we can get, any type of funding, any type of grant. There are grants out there that we'll research for you too, if you want to go forward. I can't guarantee those now, but I can guarantee that we'll look at those for you and get you as much backfunding as possible if you make that investment.
Thank you. Mr. Tarente, what would be the procedure for moving forward at this, at this time?
At this, thank you, Mr. Piratino. At this point, the board, and I can frame the motions, there would be two separate motions. One would be to, as Damian had mentioned out, an amendment to the existing GISA contract. The second motion would actually be to authorize an RFP under the GISA statute to cover the Tuwanka Elementary School, because that was not in existence at the time. The original GISA contract with, with Reynolds was entered into by the district. So if the board was inclined, a motion, this is the first motion with respect to...
Are, are you allowed to make the motion?
I'm going to frame the motion.
You're going to frame the motion?
And then the board can, can actually make the motion.
Okay.
Board member, I should say. If the board was inclined, a motion would be required directing the administration and the district solicitor to move forward with a fifth amendment to the GISA contract and consider a proposal by Reynolds Energy Services to provide indoor air quality improvements utilizing bipolar ionization and/or ultraviolet germicidal irradiation? Did I get that correct? Okay. To the district high school, middle schools and elementary schools, covered by the 2015 agreement in an amount not to exceed $2.2 million, as recommended in the presentation tonight. That would be the motion I would recommend.
Well, since I don't have that motion in front of me, can I just say, there's been a motion made. The solicitor has suggested a motion. I would like to, a second...
You would make the motion.
I would like to make the motion, as the solicitor described. I'm asking for a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions or concerns?
What exactly are, we're, we're voting to, to do the 10-day to buy the equipment?
What you're authorizing is the advertisement and the preparation of the agreement for the existing schools besides Tuwanka for, to purchase, at the, to prove the agreement to purchase the equipment to be installed at those schools.
So we're approving this?
No.
Approving the motion to advertise.
So we're approving the motion to advertise, and then we can still...
At a later date, we have to make another decision.
So let's say at, at the August meeting, you would approve the award of the work to Reynolds. So you're not awarding the work tonight.
So we could advertise it and then decide that we don't want to do this at all?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Tarente?
The second motion, if the board was inclined, a motion would be required directing the administration and the district solicitor to prepare and issue a request for proposal in conformance with the Guaranteed Energy Savings Act, as amended, to provide indoor air quality improvements utilizing bipolar ionization and/or ultraviolet germicidal irradiation, improve, I'm sorry, to Tuwanka Elementary School and the other district-owned buildings.
I would like to make a motion based upon the statements from the solicitor. May I have a second?
Second.
Who's that?
Me.
Mr. Sorillo. Thank you, Mr. Sorillo. Any, all in, excuse me, any comments, questions or concerns on this motion?
This is just adding Tuwanka because it wasn't built when we started GISA. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Any additional comments, questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstention? Motion passes nine to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds, Ms. Faze, for your presentation. We look forward to the, seeing the final agreement and the total scope of work, and very confident that you've answered at least my questions correctly and to our satisfaction. Thank you for coming down. You guys can either hang out or, or you can leave. Okay. Thank you. We have one other order of business. I'd like to bring a, a discussion to the table. We have one other order of business, I'd like to bring a, a discussion to the table. We've been contacted by many businesses and, and residents that have suffered a financial loss during this period, where we've been, been involved in this pandemic. At this time, I would like to have the solicitor talk about the possibilities of extending the penalty period for this year's school tax.
Thank you, Mr. Piratano. Last week, the governor signed a bill, it was a Senate bill, I believe 1125, it's now law, it's Act 75 of 2020, applies to school districts only. It permits a school district to extend the discount period, along with the, I guess wiping out the penalty period for payment of real estate taxes. So, again, this is about a week old, so if, if school districts are inclined to do that, it would have to be done by resolution at a public board meeting. I'd like to note that the discount period, I believe, is August 31st. So, if the board was inclined to do that, some action would need to be done at the August meeting, the August 18th meeting, and the penalty period is October 31st. So, you do have some time for the, for the penalty period. So, after the resolution, if the board was inclined to pass that, notification to the tax collector will be made, and then out to the, you know, the residents of, of the Shammany School District.
Thank you, Mr. Tarente. Mr. Irwin, could you give us any guidance on what would involve if we, if we postponed the penalty period, as far as the amount of revenues that would come in later, and how we could balance that? Can we use our, our reserves to, to bridge that gap in the in-between time?
You certainly can use your reserves to bridge that gap, and it would provide the taxpayer some flexibility during this uncertain time, and it would have no impact on the cash flows of the school district for this period. It would not have a detrimental effect on the cash flow. It would have a very small effect on the anticipated revenues from the, from the penalty period, but again, in these times, I can understand why the board would want to make that move at this time.
And I would, is currently, right now, the penalty period starts November 1st. If we extended that 60 or 90 days, you feel comfortable with the, with the cash flow in that period of time?
Again, I, I have no problems with the cash flow, but I, I believe that you're, you're going to be constrained by the period, and I'd ask Mr. Trenton to make sure that I'm correct on this, but you would be constrained by the period in which time the, the county would require the taxes to be turned over, which I believe is on or about December 31st.
That's correct. The maximum on the penalty would be, you can only do it 60 days, that would be the max.
So, if we were to extend it, we would extend it to December, the max we could extend it to would be December 31st?
That is correct, yes, because they, they have to be leaned at the county level by January 15th.
Mr. Irwin, how would this affect our residents that pay by coupon? I believe Mrs. Boyle had brought this up to me, which I wasn't thinking of.
It would have no effect on the, on the individuals who pay on a coupon with the homestead, farmstead exemption, because they're, they're typically done paying through the face period. Their, their coupons begin and, and prior to the, prior to the penalty period.
Are there any other board members that want to comment on this topic?
One question, how long are we able to extend the discount period?
What I've seen people do is about 30 days, but it would have to be, there's no real timeline on it. I mean, you could technically do it to the end of the year, if you wanted to, but...
You could align it with the penalty period.
That's, that's, that's correct.
Anyone else? Mr. Tarente, what procedure would we have to move forward with?
You, you would need to adopt a resolution at the, the August meeting.
It has to be advertised?
It doesn't have to be advertised, no, it just has to be a resolution passed by this board, and then given to the tax collector.
I feel comfortable extending the penalty deadline until December 31st, 2020. Is there any other comments on, on what we feel that the, the extension date should be, so we can have Mr. Tarente properly design a resolution for us? Everybody's good with December 31st? Then I, I would ask our solicitor to formulate a resolution for us at the August meeting to extend the tax penalty deadline only for this year's school taxes to December 31st, 2020.
Okay, is that, that's the motion that you want, you're authorizing me to prepare the resolution? Okay. I think you need a second, though.
I'm sorry, we have to vote on this. I've made a motion, I'm looking for a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes to extend the tax deadline to December 31st, 2020, nine to zero. Thank you all for being patient. Normally, a lot of these discussions we would have had during committee meetings, but there are no committee meetings in the summertime, so we had to bring them to this live meeting to get them forward. At this time, do we have any speakers that are not present in the auditorium, that are going to participate in public comment? There are none? I'm seeing Mrs. Bear Calder shaking her head no. Everyone's in the auditorium? All right, great. As we approach public speaking, I want everybody to know that we are going to hold it to a three-minute limit, which is the normal rules of procedure. We ask that the items that you bring first, what we call taxpayer residence, to talk on agenda items only. If there is extra time, we will then call for taxpayers and residents to talk on non-agenda items. I ask that when you come to the podium, you state your name, the area in which you live, excuse me, your occupation. It's very hard to hear up here on the stage, so please be close to the microphone when you speak, and spell your last name, please, so the board secretary can get them correct for the minutes. Please, no personal attacks in your comments. Observe proper decorum, we are broadcasting this live to everyone, so please remember that in your comments. Mrs. Burns, would you call the first speaker, please?
I, I didn't, I didn't have any papers.
Does someone have the list? We don't, we do have it back there, I'm sorry. I assume you're first on the list. Okay, just give us one second, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. My name is John Kelly, lifelong Middletown resident, I currently live in Snowball Gate. So, my son is currently in one of the Nishammany Elementary Schools. My concerns with any other than the aid plan is our teachers will be, where our teachers will be located. I do, I do believe the teachers need to be teaching from their schools, in their classrooms, in any plan, every day that they are scheduled to work. This would give parents the ability to bring their children to the buildings when they have questions. As parents, we did not learn math the way it is being taught by the teachers today. Teachers should be available for their normal workdays at their place of work, not working from home or any other location. I don't think that's what any of us have in mind when we think of a school teacher. We think of him in the classroom, and that is where we want them, regardless of Governor Wolf or someone else saying that the kids and the teachers would not be safe together. Classrooms are big enough for the teachers to be in them alone safely, approximately 35 by 50 feet. They are safe alone in their classrooms. I'm sure we have all watched a lot of news on different channels, the biggest issues that none of them are talking about are the teachers doing the distant learning and virtual learning at their place of work. I do believe teachers show up to their place of work is the best way to hit the ground running when our students can come back in numbers. So, I am against any plan that does not have the teachers at their school and place of work. I don't think we need another, need another new phrase this year, stay-at-home teachers? I understand the buildings cost money to open, but you already raised our taxes to do that. So, when you did that, you planned on having these buildings open and occupied. Any plan that doesn't have our teachers in the schools every day that they are supposed to be, they're working for their entire scheduled workday is a failure to our children. If it's not required that our teachers will be teaching from their classrooms, I may take my son to accredited virtual school. If our teachers are here, we are giving our parents hope that they will get back in these buildings. And have a good night, gentlemen, ladies.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Jay?
Good evening, school board members, my name is Jay Sarajian, I live at 1409 Poplar Road, right behind Pope Questing Elementary School.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Last name, S-A-R-A-J-I-A-N. I'm also retired US Army Lieutenant Colonel. I've been in HVAC systems and engineering for, I'd say, the past almost 50 years, both in the military and outside the military. I've had a lot of experience using UV lights, right, in order to kill bacteria. There's a report that I want to quote, and I'll give you a copy of the report, published by the TVA, and they're programmed to promote UV GI lights to help fight influenza, COVID-19, and many other bacterias. They've, they're in a process right now of funding schools within their authority, the TVA authority, and I have the report right here of why they're doing it. And the most interesting fact in the report is that it's been around almost 100 years that UV light prevents or kills viruses and bacteria. And it's amazing that the first school system that actually installed UV lights was back in 1941 in Philadelphia, at the Germantown Friends School. And what happened was, they didn't have enough lights to put it in all the schools. So, the one school that they put it in, it, only 15% of the students came down with the measles. However, in this next school over, that didn't have the UV lights installed, 50% of the class came down with measles. And this is back in 1941. What I'd like to propose is that I can give you, I'm retired, so I'm not in the business anymore, but I can give you manufacturers where you can buy the UV lights off the shelf, I could work with your plant personnel to install the UV lights pre-filtered. That's where you want to install these UVC lights, pre-filtered, to keep, using your existing filters, right? It kills all the bacteria in the system. If you don't have UVC, if you don't have an HVAC system in a particular wing of a school, they make two-by-four light fixtures that have the UVC lights installed behind the light fixture. So, you, what happens is, it's like having a mini HVAC system in each classroom. One of these two-by-four light fixtures will decontaminate one classroom.
Sir, your time's up, you have an opportunity, a second period, to come up and continue your conversation. There's a second public comment period. Thank you.
Jamie Best?
I'm James Best from Langhorne Borough. Came here tonight to just talk about school taxes.
Could you spell your name for the board secretary, please? Your last name, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you spell your last name for the board secretary?
Yes, my name is Best, James B-E-S-T. Okay, so, I came here tonight to talk about school taxes. I need to know if any of your staff, teachers, bus drivers, custodians, were laid off this year, or furloughed? I just feel that the taxes that we're paying, they should be public. People should know if they're paying all these taxes, they only worked a half a year. They only work a half a year every year. They worked less than a half a year this year. I'd like to know if the seniors can, can get a discount in their taxes this year. We're retired, and we have a hard time saving this money each year. There's other people that are having lots of hard times now. I don't think they'd have a hard time getting less money, paying less taxes. Would anybody be able to tell me if anyone was laid off this year? The bus drivers, I know, didn't drive the buses? Or were they paid the whole time? Does anybody have that information?
The, the board normally reserves comment to the end of the meeting, but we'll address your questions at the end of the meeting.
Deb Harker?
I just wanted to start out by saying thank you to all of the administration, to the teachers, to all the support staff, because everything since March has really been a really hard time, and I really feel that everybody has really put forth their best effort to try to make the best situation for the students. The reason why I wanted to come tonight was in regards to the survey that went out to the parents, and I know that Dr. McGee, you touched on this, but the one thing when these survey results came out... results came out was that I had a friend who jumped with excitement by saying that over 70% of the parents, she was very encouraged, wanted their children back in school to some degree, whether it be full-time or whether it was on a halftime basis. The prepositioning for the survey was that we were to assume that school would be in session and that we should make our choices based upon that assumption. So I was actually very surprised to see any data in Plan C, because I didn't remember that being an option that I was allowed to pick. I think that a lot of the data that you see under Plan B, where parents are saying that they would like their children to be in school for halftime, was because we were told that we should be assuming that our children were in school. There could be many parents like myself, that if I had to choose between Plan B, where my child was in school halftime, or Plan D, where we had to take a bare-bones education without extracurricular or special courses, I would rather choose Plan B, because my son is going into his senior year, and I think that Plan D could affect his opportunities for applications for college and so forth. So I just don't think that this survey necessarily shows the true temperament, temperature of the community's desire to return to schools. And while you're trying to plan for the best opportunities to have the safest environment for school, I wonder if we should be concentrating on trying to have the best plan to be able to school from home and have that be, and Plan C, be the way that we go back to school in September. We were originally told that Plan C would not be an option unless the governor shuts schools down, but we have started to see other school districts that are choosing that option voluntarily, such as Council Rock and Philadelphia Schools. And I would like to know if you could possibly resurvey the community to get a better understanding if we're really looking to go back to school, if, or are we all looking for a better remote option that doesn't put us into D? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hare.
There's no further sign-ups.
At this time, is there anyone in attendance that wants to speak or speak on a non-agenda item? None? Thank you.
I just want to know that the Board had received a lot of feedback from the public that was concerned about not being able to attend the meeting and that we were not going to have a virtual question-and-answer period. Virtual question-and-answer period, it was only used when we have virtual meetings. And we had put out instructions to the public that if they didn't want to come, but they wanted to submit comments or questions to the Board, that they could do so through the superintendent's office. This is the stack of letters that we received. It's almost 100 pages long. There's lots of questions and comments in here from the public. While I cannot guarantee those that decide to send it, that we will answer each one independently, the Board received a copy of every one of these letters, as well as all the other comments that came in from the survey. Dr. McGee has sent us copies of, continually sent us copies of all the input from our Nishamani stakeholders. The Board does receive them, the Board does read them, and where we can, we will try and comment back directly, or, as with these questions, many of them cover the same topic, we'll try and get back to them in a more generalized fashion. So we do appreciate the extent that the Nishamani community has reached out to us. Please continue to do that, and we're, you know, in this time, we're trying to make sure that, you know, we still remain as transparent as possible. A lot of people have asked, you know, why are we having a live meeting? And I did respond to some people that sent me, you know, personal letters as well as on social media. You know, we've been in a Zoom virtual environment since March. And from my own experience, as well as having conversations with additional Board members, you know, some members really feel there's a lot being lost in a virtual environment. A lot of the decisions we make rarely do require a collaboration, a back-and-forth between members in order to reach a good consensus. And I can definitely state that I definitely felt a lot was being taken away from our meetings and the deliberations we have to make. So I felt it was important that the Board start coming back together, especially when having such a difficult decision to weigh as when we're going to be able to bring our kids back in, or what type of format that we're going to be able to have if we can't bring them back in. So that was the emphasis for why I felt it was necessary for us to get back to in-person meetings. So I hope that the public will stay connected with us, continue to reach out to us, and we'll try and remain as transparent as possible. Thank you.
We're going to move on now to Section 3, which is Routine Matters. I'd like to have a master motion to adopt 3.01 Minutes, 3.02 Treasuries Report, 3.03 Check Register and Procurement Card Purchases, 3.04 Investments, 3.05 Exonerations. Motion's been made. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mrs. Hollenbeck. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
It was Bowman.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry, Mrs. Bowman, go right ahead, please.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's hard to hear up here. The reverb is terrible. Okay, so I'm sorry, it wasn't Mrs. Hollenbeck, it was Mrs. Bowman with the second. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. That brings us to Section 4.01. And I'm just a little confused here from the administration. It's Section 4.01, but it's 5.01, Approval of Act 93? Is there a reason for the 5.01?
It should be 4.01.
Okay, sorry about that. All righty. Be it resolved that the Nishamani School Board of Directors approves the 2025 agreement with the Nishamani Cabinet Administrators Association. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Just for the public, we originally did pass this motion in June for our Nishamani Cabinet Administrators, but we mistakenly attached the wrong document for that meeting. This resolution corrects that document and is effective as of July 1, 2020. Hearing no other comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes nine, zero. Mr. Sullivan, Section 5, please.
I'd like to make a master motion to approve Item 5.01, Retirements, Resignations, and End of Assignments. 5.02 Tenure Awards. 5.03 Leaves of Absence. 5.05, I can't find, oh, there's, Co-Curricular Appointments. 5.06 Ancillary Appointments. 5.07 Certified Staff Memorandum of Understanding Approval. That's it.
Motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Was that Mr. Allen?
Yep.
Second by Mr. Allen. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
I have a question about Section 5.05. We don't even know if the kids are going back to school and what they're doing and not doing, so why are we doing co-curricular appointments?
Many of the co-curricular appointments start August 10th with our sports camps. They also, if we were lucky to get back into school early in September, they may be able to begin. So without approving them, they won't be able to work at that point. We could wait until August.
But what if we approve them and then we don't have school, or we're required to pay them? We were in the spring when we shut down school. We had to still pay them for the whole rest of the time, even though we didn't have any of the opportunities.
That is correct, but I believe that was because of Act 13. I'll refer to the Solicitor. If, if, if these are approved and the activity does not happen, are we obligated to pay? I think that, I think that's, I think that frames the question, correct?
I, I think if you approve this tonight and, or this, was it 5.05, and the sport or extracurricular does not occur, you will be required to pay.
Do we have any indication of if these sports or any other events, I mean, I don't want to pick on sports, but any other events, do we have any indication if this is going to happen or not?
No, no indication other than our present status. If we did not approve this, the August 10th beginning of, of camp for high school sports would not begin.
What, what about all of the camps that have already started?
I'm sorry, I do.
There's camp, there's camps that have already started, band camp, football, cheerleading.
They are voluntary camps. They are not paid time.
So they're not being paid for that right now?
No, they're not.
Wow.
I also had a concern about 5.5. Not all of these are sports, fall sports. These are, a lot of these are after-school activities that might not ever happen. Some of these are clubs that are probably not going to go off. So for me, I would have liked to have seen a list that maybe pulled out the fall sports activities that are starting August 10th, and maybe the other co-curriculars put into a separate category to be voted on later.
Any other comments from other Board members? Hearing none, there's been a motion placed on the table, but I'm hearing some Board members would like to remove 505 at this time. Does anybody want to restate the motion? Would that be the proper procedure, to restate the motion and remove 505?
That's one way you could do it. You could, you could do a motion to, because you didn't call the question yet, you could do it.
And, and then can we discuss 505 separately?
You could pull it out and do it separately. Yes.
Does anybody have an objection to doing that? Then, Mr. Sullivan, would you please restate the motion, please?
I'd like to restate the motion to approve, I'd like to make a master motion to approve Item 5.01, Resignations, Retirements, End of Assignments. 5.02 Tenure Awards. 5.03 Leaves of Absence. 5.05 Appointments. 5.07.
5.07.
5.06 Ancillary Appointments.
Uh-uh.
No. 5.07 Certified Staff Memorandum of Understanding Approval.
Okay, to be clear before I ask for a second, there was a master motion made for 5.01, 5.02, 5.03, 5.04, 5.07. May I have a second, please?
Second.
A second, I, Miss Hollenbeck, I believe. Any comments, questions, or concerns on that motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine, zero. Mr. Sullivan?
You want to do them separate?
If they're the same thing, I would combine them.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Items 5.05. Lost my spot. Co-curricular Appointments and 5.06 Ancillary Appointments.
Thank you. There's been a motion for 5.05, 5.06. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Dr. McGee, I would look to you and your staff first. I know you initially indicated that, that these can wait, but I want to hear if you can be a little bit more specific about the pros and cons. It's a pretty extensive list, difficult for you to predict. Do we have any guidance from any organization on what's going to happen with fall sports?
The only guidance we have at the moment is PIA is continuing with the schedule, but I believe they're supposed to meet tomorrow, I've heard, so whether that changes or not.
Mr. Kovitz, I see you waving there. You want to? No? The same by?
Yeah, I do have a question. If, if we don't approve this motion, would those fall coaches be allowed to coach until it is approved? Would they be allowed to use school facilities?
You're, I'm, the feed is muted. I don't know if you can hear me, but I can't hear the feed all of a sudden. Yeah, but you sounded far. I'm not hearing the, the feed in from the microphones.
We're just pausing the meeting for a moment to clarify technical issues.
Check 1, 2.
Yeah, I can hear a little bit better now. I think, I believe I heard Mr. Piratano.
Can you hear me, Mr. Kovitz?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marington, would you continue, please?
I'll, just me, I'll repeat the question. If we don't approve this motion tonight, will fall coaches be allowed to use school facilities and continue their programs?
I don't know the answer to that question.
This, this issue, you know, is, is very difficult because of the experience of last year. There's other issues that have come up at this meeting that I think it may be probable that I'll have to call for a special meeting before the meeting on the 18th. So if we were to do that, and we ended up in the first or second week of August, it's only July 28th now, could we have more time to consider, consider this, doing such?
Sure.
I, I want to be clear, though. For me, it's not just about sports, I mean, because obviously I want a sports season to happen, everybody does, but there's a lot of debate club, and there's a lot of things on here. If we're not in school, are we going to have a debate club? So I just want to make sure that we kind of know what we're doing with scheduling with school, if we're going back to school, A, B, online, whatever, before we decide on this. This, to me, is just kind of put in the cart before the horse.
I understand. It was based on the false assumption that if the activity did not happen, we would not have to pay. So just to my understanding, that if we hire a seventh-grade softball coach and there's no seventh-grade softball team, that individual, there's, there's no softball season, therefore there's no pay, but we have to go, so that's why it's here. So with that assumption being wrong, I understand.
At this particular time, I think we ought to give the administration more time to clarify the, the legal ramifications. I know Mr. Tarantos gave his opinion, but we also have Labor Council that deals with these contracts as well. Maybe we ought to make sure both take a look at it and give us a recommendation. And in the meantime, Dr. McGee, you can follow up and maybe give us more information on, if this can be split up into things that may or may not happen. I don't know how much will happen between then, but like I said, I foresee that we're probably going to call for a special meeting before the 18th to deal with some issues.
And there may be additional guidance coming from the state on this issue, too.
That's true, too. That's true, too. So at this time, without taking a vote on this motion, can we, without being no, is there a way to, since a question's been called?
Yeah, you can, you can, need to a motion to table.
I'd like to make a motion to table Mr. Sullivan's motion on 5.05 and 5.06. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. That brings us to Section 6. Mrs. Hollenback.
I assume I'm doing the same thing with Section 6.05 and 6.06. I'd like to make a master motion to approve 6.01, retirements, resignations, end of assignments, 6.02, leaves of absence, 6.03, revised returns from leave, and 6.04, appointments.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenback. Have motions been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries nine to zero. That brings us to Section 7. Mrs. Boyle, that's you.
That's true. I'd like to make a motion to approve 7.01 with the reopening health and safety plan on July preliminary approval. You want me to read that?
Yeah, tell them.
Okay, okay. Whereas the Neshamity School District is required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education to approve a reopening of the school's health and safety plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamity Board of School Directors hereby approves the Neshamity School District reopening health and safety plan as presented, subject to any changes necessary due to conditions and additional guidance from the applicable government agencies in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. Motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Dr. McGee, just a tad bit of clarity here. Reopening means our health and safety, not that we are voting on a reopening plan.
That is correct. The meeting on the 18th will actually reapprove this plan with the exact plan.
Thank you.
So this is basically approving the, regardless of what the option is, what procedures are going to take place in school to make sure they're safe outside the number of students in school at a particular time.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any additional comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Hollenback, Section 8, please.
I have a question about this one at the end, too, but 8.01, Sunday facility usage. Whereas according to board policy, 800 facilities, fields may not be scheduled on Sundays without school board approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamity Board of School Directors hereby approves Sunday usage for Bucks County Challenge Mustangs Flag Football for the High School Harry Frank Stadium for Sundays, September 13th, 20th, 27th, October 4th, 11th, 18th, 25th, and November 1st, 8th, 15th, and 11/22 is a makeup day.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenback. A motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cirillo with a second. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, one, we're going to do Mrs. Bowman first, then we'll get to you, Adam.
So we're basically saying that we're going to reserve our fields for the usage for this football team, but we don't even know if our facilities are going to be open.
Mr. Irwin, do you have any information on that?
The only information I can provide is that with the usage forms that we've had, people request the facilities' usage forms, both indoor and outdoor, we're making them assign that they have a wellness plan, if you will, to keep the participants safe under the Department of Health standards that are in place at that time, which means that if in November we're in the green, in October we're in orange, they have to make the accommodations to keep their members who are participating safe, regardless of whether, what stage it's in. But to your point, you are making that pledge, that this should be permissible for this outside organization to use our field, even if we're not open, under this motion.
I think that's another one we need to pull out and table until we have a definite plan. I don't see how we can possibly not open and run our fall football team, but then rent out our facilities for another organization to play football.
I just want to jump in. The Bucks County Challenger Mustangs is a flag football for children with special needs. It's something that the, our current football team and football, and members of football teams from other schools in lower Bucks County actually volunteer their time to contribute to it. Me, on a personal note, this would be a horrible tragedy if we do not give them access to do this. This means a heck of a lot to these kids. It is an amazing charitable organization. If it doesn't cost us anything, if they're going to follow health and safety plans for their own individuals, I would be strongly in favor of allowing them to do it, whether or not our team plays or not. This is a special situation.
But with that said, also, children with special needs are also significantly vulnerable to this virus right now and at risk. So if we're making the statement that we are not running our own fall sports for the health and safety of our students, I don't know how we could possibly turn around and say, well, it's okay for special needs.
I don't have an, to me, it's not an issue of if our football program runs or not. My question is, can we do this? Because last year, when we shut the schools down, we shut baseball down, we shut basketball down mid-season for other outside organizations that were using our facilities, because we weren't open for business, so to speak. So if we are not open for business, how can we open up our field to another organization? That's my concern. I want to do it, I want to approve it all. I just, how do we do that right now?
I can't give you an exact date, but it was either late June or early July, we reopened our outside facilities to outside organizations with the health and safety plan submitted that Mr. Irwin talks about. Not the inside, we have not opened inside yet, but somewhere in late June, early July, it might even be sooner than that, we opened it by amending our form a little bit, and they had to submit a health and safety plan. This was after it came out of the Department of Health of Pennsylvania. So we've been providing access to our outside facilities to organizations beginning early summer.
And Mrs. Hollenback, just to put it in that timeframe, because everything was changing, at that time when that was done, we were in the mindset that we were going to be open in the fall. And so it has changed a little bit.
I understand that, but I guess we didn't know that all the facilities, the outside facilities have opened because we didn't need board approval because it wasn't on a Sunday?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't know that.
I'd like to give Mr. Kovitz a chance to make his comment.
Yeah, similar to this, Bowman, you know, provided we have these health and safety plans, what is the district's liability should, you know, God forbid, we have an outbreak? Or one of these weekend, Sunday activities leads to an outbreak or a spike or what have you?
I think there is immunity protection by statute in Pennsylvania. If there is some type of willful misconduct by the district, that is an exception to that immunity. If there is a health and safety plan in place, submitted to the district for these fields or use of the facilities, and that's complied with, I think the district is, has complied with, you know, what they're supposed to do under state law, and, you know, that would not most likely fall into the category of willful misconduct. So immunity would apply if, you know, there was an outbreak. So. Does that address your question, Adam?
Yeah, thank you. I guess the issue remains, is this something we can even vote on right now? Just, I'm assuming as long as they have their health and safety plans, it's okay? As long as they're following the federal and state county departments of health, and we're good to go? Is that it?
Since Mr. Parentano indicated that we're probably having a special meeting, and these games don't start until September 13th, we have time to table this as well, to put it on either the special meeting or August 18th. I don't want to tell these children no, however, I don't have enough information to-
And I think that's fine for this one, but there's two different issues on the table. We're asking for approval to use the facilities on Sunday. If you're saying we can't use the facilities at all, there's a whole bunch of Little League baseball teams we're going to have to move off campus. That's-
Well, that, I mean, if you guys are, you're able to do that now, you only need our approval for Sundays.
We're asking, the use of the facility doesn't, the board has a policy on it, we follow that policy. The policy says, if you're going to open up on Sunday, it costs us more to open up on Sunday. That's why, that's why you asked to hear it. You want to approve it. So that's why it's here. There's probably, I don't know how many Little League teams using our fields around right now at the moment, based on our facility usage and the guidelines put out by the Commonwealth and their waiver form.
I'm inclined at this time, based upon the comment, to let the motion stand on its own and take a vote. Turns out that it fails, then we can revisit it at the next meeting.
I'd just like to add one more thing. I know in the spring, there was, I mean, Governor Wolf issued an order shutting everything down. So if you pass this, I think if you pass this motion tonight, and let's say Governor Wolf, you know, shuts everything down, and, you know, the schools are the way they were in April and May, it's void anyway. I mean, you're not going to be able to use the field, so.
At this time, a second has been made. Comments and questions have been addressed. Calling for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? One opposed? Does that require, two opposed? Any abstentions?
Are we allowed to abstain?
I would assume you could.
You may abstain.
I'd rather abstain than say no. I just don't have enough information to make a clear decision on this.
Okay, Mrs. Bowman?
I'm going to abstain as well. I'd like to see if we're going to open or not first. I think that-
Do we need a roll call vote?
You should take a roll call vote.
We're going to take a roll call vote. Mrs. Barron's called. An alphabetical order, please.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Abstain.
Ms. Boyle?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Hollenback?
Abstain.
Mr. Kovitz?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Marington?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Seven yes and two abstain.
Thank you. Motion passes. All right, that will bring us to other board business. Does any member have any other board business they wish to bring? Hearing none. We're going to move on to our second public comment period. Again, the same rules apply. List your name, excuse me, state your name, your occupation, the area for which you live. Please spell your name. No personal attacks, and you have a three-minute time limit. Does anyone wish to address the podium? Same one, please address the podium, sir. You can come to the podium, sir.
Again, my name is Jay Surage, and I think you have me on record. I'd like to continue on with, I think you shouldn't open up the school without having UV protection. It's that important. Well, I was talking about before, the different approaches that you could take with UVC lights. What I'd like to do is get specific with possibly your plant engineer and go over things that he could do in order to, action that he could take prior to opening the school, that it wouldn't cost that much money if he bought the material himself, all right, and then installed it with his own crew. That's all I'd like to say. So you have my name and number. I'm available to assist him. I won't do the job, but I can lay it out for him. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would wish to come to the podium? Is that you, Mr. McGinley? No?
No.
Okay, no problem. You're a good sport, Mr. McGinley.
That's not a hard moment.
There you go. All right, seeing no one else, we're going to move on to board comment. As before, I'll call members alphabetically. Mrs. Bowman, would you like to make any comments this evening?
I got to pull my mask down because nobody can hear me. I just wanted to make a comment based on what the gentleman that came up and said that our teachers were home half time. Our teachers were forced to work at home. That was not a choice. That was not a choice by the district. That was not a choice by the teachers. And that was due to a governor's mandate. To suggest that our teachers worked anything less than a full day, I think is completely unfair and invalid. Our teachers worked to full capacity, to the best of their ability. They trained nonstop in order to provide our students with the best education that they could. I think they were highly successful in the education they provided our students in the spring, and I just wanted to speak to that. Also, the gentleman that came up and talked about us laying off and furloughing employees, to the best of my knowledge, I do not believe this district did lay off or furloughed anyone due to COVID-19. I stood behind that decision because we did not want to contribute to the unemployment problem in Ben Salem when all these other businesses were out of business and closing their doors. So I do not believe we laid off anybody. We tried our best to avoid, and we supported any contracts that we had on the table for co-curriculars, and we did pay our coaches, and we took care of our people. So to suggest that we should have laid off and avoid raising taxes, I think is also unfair. So I just wanted to say that, and I hope everybody's staying safe and is healthy and had a great summer.
Thank you. Mrs. Boyle, would you like to make any comment this evening?
I'd just like to give an accolade to the administration and all the work that they have done. And I'd like to extend a thank you to all the parents who wrote in and expressed their opinion, and hopefully we will all survive this together.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. Mrs. Hollenback?
I didn't realize all the women were first. I, too, would like to thank administration for all the hard work that they've done in putting in Plans A, B, C, and D. I'm sure at one point it was up to Plan Z, because everything keeps changing. I appreciate all the work. I'm hoping that we can all come to some agreement as best as we can to get the kids back to normal. I'm sure the kids are wanting something other than sitting at home all the time, so I am glad that people are out and about a little bit more while everybody stays safe. And I look forward to the recommendation coming from Dr. McGee.
Very good. Mr. Kovitz, would you like to make any comments?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to mirror, first of all, Ms. Bowman's comments. I, too, am an educator. an educator, and it certainly wasn't my desire to want to sit at home and teach my kids this past spring. What was definitely not my first choice, but didn't mean I sat around and did nothing. Actually, I worked harder because my kids were up all hours of the night because no teenager in their right mind would ever want to get up at eight o'clock in the morning for an eight o'clock in the morning class. So I had to be available for my kids nearly 24/7. It was tiring, and I didn't ask any more money for it. It's not something that I that I refused to do because I wanted to be there for my kids. It's something I did, and I did gladly. Also, it's evidenced by the fact that we have some voluntary coaches doing voluntary sports training with our some of our teams. That should also speak volumes. They're doing it because they want to be there for their kids. So again, we are here on a night for probably one of the longest meetings that I've ever been part of since I've been a member of the school board. We get paid nothing for this. We're doing this because we want to be here for the kids. There's a lot of people putting a lot of effort into this. Let us not let us not be petty at this time, and let us not take for granted the fact that there are teachers and professionals and folks in the administration that are putting in extra time over this summer to do everything we can to make sure that our kids can get back to school as soon as possible under the safest conditions possible. That said, there is one other thing I'd like to bring out. I prepared a statement. This is in regard to your recent comments made by our president, Mr. Parentano. And there was an article done in response to his comments about the Black Lives Matter movement. As a fellow Neshamni school board member and chairman of the Middletown Democratic Party, I was shocked to see the comments made by President Steve Parentano about Black Lives Matter and wholeheartedly condemn them. This type of language is deeply hurtful, offensive, and dangerous, especially when coming from an elected official who is entrusted with the health, safety, and development of our of our youth. While Mr. Parentano is certainly welcome to his own personal opinions, I proudly support BLM, Black Lives Matter, and want to ensure the want to assure the students, parents, faculty, and entire Neshamni community that in no way does he speak for all of us on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kovitz, that brings us to, I believe, Mr. Mr. Marington.
Adam, you made it very difficult to follow after that. I'm going to go back on a positive note with and thank the administration and all the Neshamni community again for sticking with us in what is proving to be an even more difficult task than any of us thought back in March. I guess the only thing we know, I the best minds in this world, medical minds, scientific minds, have been working on this virus now for five, six, seven months, and we still have no answers. And that has put us all in a very difficult situation. It's fluid. You know, information changes on a daily basis. And I'm just kind of asking for more patience from the Neshamni community as we as a board and as the administration here wrestles with these problems. I'm speaking for myself. I believe I'm speaking for the whole board also when I say that we fought this thing so far. We have fought this virus hard to this point. And for myself, and I hope everybody else, we're not going to give up now. I think that the safety of our kids has to be first. And that's kind of where I stand. I just want to lay that out there and make it make it clear. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marington. I love that word patience in your comments. Mr. Cirillo, would you have any comment this evening?
Sure. Again, echoing the sentiments of previous people, I want to thank Dr. McGee for his transparency this entire time, constantly sending out emails on a on a weekly basis, keeping people abreast of what he's attempting and trying to do. These are remarkable times, and I appreciate everybody's hard work for all of it. I tend to ask people the question in how do we move forward in our life in a COVID world in the absence of an acceptable vaccine? And I think nobody wants to answer that on any side of any aisle. And I think we have to try to do that. I think our children actually are looking for somebody to come up with those answers. There needs to be a sense of normalcy somewhere along the line for their health and well-being in terms of mental stability, socialization, all of those things. It's extremely difficult because people have to weigh out health concerns. But if this isn't going anywhere anytime soon, we need to start moving forward somehow, some way. Because we just keep going backwards. We are very reactionary in general, not anybody specific, but it's everything's reactive. We have to be proactive. We have to start being proactive. We have to start putting things out there and start to follow through with it, have a game plan, and try to move forward. And everything that this administration is doing is trying to move forward. With all due respect, I don't give a darn about other school districts. We are Neshamni. We are going to try to move forward. So thank you, Dr. McGee. Thank you, Mr. Irwin, all the staff, everybody on this board who works well together. We just need to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. Brings us to Mr. Sullivan. Would you like to make any comments?
I'd like to echo a lot of the sentiments that were just recently brought up. I'd like to commend Dr. McGee and his team for the efforts they put forward. I'm sure Dr. McGee's first 60 days on the job have been very enjoyable for him. I'd like to commend him on the communication he's done.
Sixty? Sixty?
Almost sixty. You count me? No, it's true. Thirty. Sorry. I'm ahead of myself. So your communication has been great. I've gotten a lot of comments from residents about it, and you are to be commended. On one other note, one thing about this country, we do have freedom of speech. And whether we do or don't agree with people's opinions, that's one thing. But people on the school board is an apolitical function and position. So I will take exception to the fact that Mr. Kovitz brought up the Democratic Party of Middleton. I don't think politics has anything to do with any comments that need to be made. If you're voting as a sitting board member, that's one thing. When you bring up political, that's a problem, and I have an issue with that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Torrente has indicated he would like the privilege to make comment.
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. And this goes to Ms. Bowman's point about paying teachers, support staff, and, you know, appointments by the board. By statute, under the Pennsylvania School Code, this district was required to pay the teachers. And also, under Act 13 of 2020, the district was also required to pay any support staff for extracurricular appointments. So I just wanted to to get that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torrente. And I want to apologize to Dr. McGee. Normally, it's our format to call on our super first during board comment to address the very important questions that come from the public. And I guess we're a little rusty getting back to the in-person format. So, Dr. McGee, would you please like to make any commentary?
Thank you, Mr. Parentano, and thank you to the board. It comes with a team. We have a great team, great cabinet team, great administrators, and I'm looking forward to get 11,000 teachers and support staff back to complete that team. That's what makes it work. Finishing up on Mrs. Harker's comments, she is absolutely right. That survey, as someone who wanted to choose choice C, the verbiage implied that you shouldn't choose it and didn't give you a choice to go one way or the other. So on Friday, I hope to roll out the recommendation, which with choices for the board, but a primary direction. And then thereafter, we'll resurvey parents as to what they what they believe making choice C a viable option. And Mrs. Harker, I don't know if you said it or not, but you were concerned about Plan D having no co-curricular. That's not the case, so I have to I have to clear that up. If you're Plan D, you're full Neshamni, full services, full software, full co-curricular, full social events. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Mr. Allen, please, would you like to make any commentary?
Good evening, everyone. Glad to be here in person. And, you know, it's funny, it is, it doesn't hit you right at once, but it's after you close down your laptop and you realize, darn, I didn't quite get my point across. It is hard. So I am glad to be back live. I did want to thank, I know he's long gone, but I want to thank Mr. Spar from SiteLogic IQ, I'm going to have to get used to saying that, for bringing that new technology as far as the bipolar ionization technology to our attention. When we first started talking, you know, we mentioned it over the phone a couple times after he'd brought it to our attention. I thought, you know, I knew we were doing things with our filtering system, certainly was aware that we're doubling our efforts to clean the classrooms and hallways and auditorium, all areas that our children will be, the environments our children will be in. I'm glad that this other additional air cleaning technology has come forward because I think in in many ways, I said before, people were asking, is this snake oil? Yeah, you know, in the business that we're in, HVAC, water treatment, or whatever, there are a lot of what we call snake oil salesmen and voodoo technology. This is not. This has been around. It's been tweaked. It's been improved upon. And it it's just not exact COVID-19. It's it'll help us for all kinds of, I'm not saying this right. I'm trying to say even, you know, just because COVID-19 came out, you know, this is an additional protection that we're trying to accomplish. Even if that weren't the case, I think it would be a good investment for our buildings because, you know, kids carry a lot of germs, little Petri dishes. And, you know, UV is solid technology, as gentlemen came and talked about. I know it's heavily used in food industry, dairy cases. You'll often see them, your local ice cream shops. So I'm glad that we're discussing this, and if we move forward on it, I just wanted to say that I think it's a good investment, regardless of whether the virus hit us or not. That brings me to, I'm not entirely sure if I thanked the administration and Dr. McGee for all the work you did for the senior picnic. We've, you know, the Zoom meetings all kind of blur together. But, you know, nerves are a bit frayed, to say the least, rolling up to that. Motions were high, trying to make sure that we put something together that the most of our seniors could come together, enjoy themselves as a class again, include those that were moving ahead for, you know, military service. And it kind of came down to this, that was kind of it, to get all of the class an opportunity to come together. And I just wanted to say, you know, from what I've heard back, made it a point not to come up campus because I would be one, and so, but I heard very good feedback about how that day went. Thank God, I believe our books came on time. It was also, like, to add to everything else, maybe the books wouldn't get there in time. And the car parade, I keep hearing about how great that went and what a wonderful experience that was. I suspect we'll be hearing that again. But I just want to take the opportunity to thank you for that, if I did. And that brings us to all the work you have done and your staff have done on our back-to-school, which, of course, as soon as we had the senior class moved on, that began the next top topic. And I just wanted to thank you for keeping us informed. You know, it's, I'm not saying others don't, you know, as superintendent, but, you know, it's, you get an email from the public, and they're asking you questions, and you know what your opinion is, but you're not entirely sure what is on the mind of the administration. Thank you for keeping us informed so we can give valid answers. And I'm also not happy that that we had to bring politics into this discussion, to change tack a minute. You know, it's just a mechanism of the system that we have to to run as a Republican or a Democrat. Or both, because we are allowed to cross file. We are allowed to cross file for a reason. Because this board works best when it is apolitical, when we don't have ulterior motives, if we don't have parties and party officials whispering in our ear, trying to trying to push an agenda. We're here for the Neshamni community, all of them, for our students, our children, the parents, the taxpayers that pay us to make decisions for their children. I take great exception to those kind of politics coming in and being mentioned. And I believe that's all I'm going to say about it, because I am not happy.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Yes. Go ahead. I'm not entertaining anymore, though.
I just wanted to say that the school board is probably the most political, non-political organization I know. And we do try to keep it out, you know. Every once in a while, it creeps in. I think everybody has a right to to say what they want to say. I do think it's important that when we say, you know, different political things, that we make sure that we are saying it as a personal thought and not so as not to give people the impression that we're speaking, you know, in an official capacity.
Duly noted, Mrs. Boyle. I'm going to finish up here. First, I want to, again, thank Dr. McGee, his team, the entire staff and teachers, who pulled off an incredible event in June 24th, which we were hoping to be our graduation day, but it didn't turn out well. But all indications, as Mr. Allen stated, it was a fantastic affair, and I just can't thank him enough. I don't want anybody to forget that this Saturday, we are going to graduate our seniors in an in-person ceremony. We are going to have two ceremonies. The first one, I believe, starts at nine, and the second one starts at one, is it?
I want to say 12:30.
We're going to say 12:30. I know our Mr. Sullivan will be attending there, giving the address. And we hope that everyone has a safe and extremely exuberant time watching these kids be able to walk and get the the experience that they need to get through this rite of passage that so many other children have been able to have. So it's just a great thing that we've been able to stay the course and make sure our kids get what they deserve. So I just can't say enough about the entire Neshamni school system and putting this together. You know, Mrs. Bowman touched on it, the gentleman that spoke, and Mr. Torrente, we have followed up on Act 13. As I stated, he was concerned about taxes. Of course, we're concerned about taxes. Nobody wants to raise taxes. You know, we just had that discussion in June. And the people that are calling me looking for tax relief, and the most I can offer them is an extension of time, or most of this board can offer them is an extension of time. Our obligations did not cease when schools shut down. We did save some money, mainly in the areas of utilities. But the amount of money that we are going to spend going forward to provide COVID mitigation is going to be in the millions of dollars. is going to be in the millions of dollars. We talked about it, that the minimum we will probably say is about four million, maybe as much as six million. I don't see how that changes unless there is no school whatsoever and it's all online. But we've already prepared and we've bought thousands of items, literally thousands of items that Dr. McGee went through in his health and safety plan to deal with these issues. Neshamani is ready. Whether we go to full in school, we go to a hybrid, or we go to a virtual, Neshamani will be ready to provide the best education that we can provide in the best format we're allowed. We will not fail these children. That's why we're all here. Dr. McGee, I, you know, when Mr. Jones left us, you know, I had a statement, I talked about, you know, what Joe faced when he walked in here, all the things we were doing, how upside down this place was. Well, I can't speak for Dr. McGee, but this place is twice upside down as it was then. To have to plan to carry out school in the middle of a pandemic is a Herculean task. And I've tried to monitor him. I've tried to make sure he doesn't wear himself out. I've asked him to try and tone it back a little bit, but he, and it's his work ethic, wants to make sure that anybody that reaches out to him, that he tries to answer them and make them sure that Neshamani will meet the challenges. And I commend him for doing that, even though I wish he would get some more sleep. So.
Thank you, Mr. Peritano.
No problem. Glad to state it. Otherwise, as far as our efforts to increase the infrastructure in our classrooms to have active systems, the key word there is active systems. Doesn't require to make sure you have a mask on, even though we want you to have a mask on. It doesn't require you to use the hand sanitizer every time you walk in the building, even though we want you to use the hand sanitizer. We plan to have active systems in our buildings to help contain the spread of pathogens, bacterias, viruses, regardless of COVID-19. This is going to be an asset to help protect our teachers' health, help protect our students' health, and help give security to the parents that are sending their kids to our care, that we're providing the best environment possible for them to have a great education that we want to provide here at Neshamani. So as Mr. Allen spoke, I think we would be entertaining this regardless of COVID-19. COVID-19 has just made it an urgency for us to do. And we're going to do the advertisement and in our next public meeting, whether that be a special meeting or a dis-scheduled meeting, the board's going to have a discussion on whether or not to move forward with that. And I can just state my own personal belief, it's something I believe we need to do. Otherwise, thank you again to the entire Neshamani community that reached out to us through the email system. Me and Dr. McGee and I are going to work together to try and come up with a format to address these. I hope most of these questions were answered today in our presentation. And as Dr. McGee stated, we're going to look forward to Friday for his recommendations. And the board will deliberate on their own until we can get together again to make a decision on the option that we feel best meets the community's needs. You, the community, are the stakeholders and your input is important to us. Don't think we're just making a decision based upon papers that are being put in front of us. I'm reading these emails, going through the surveys, I've had conversations with my own personal doctor, as well as talking to our staff here at the school. I've reached out to my neighbors. I understand the apprehension. I understand the frustration. We're frustrated as well. But we're going to make this work and we're going to make sure our kids don't suffer for it. Stating that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Seconded by Mr. Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, all.